I'm here, we're live. We are on.
We're on.
Welcome. Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled Glendale City Council meeting for August the 9th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Garpadian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is a flag salute led by Councilmember Najarian followed by the invocation. Please rise.
Thank you. Let's all rise and state our allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This evening, as we gather to conduct the business before the city, we pray for its continued success, progress, and our community's health and vitality. We give thanks to the citizens who give freely of their time in support of these goals. As we are joined by some of those volunteers this evening representing the Rotary Club and its members and their supporters, we are reminded of the vital role of the countless volunteers and benefactors who dedicate themselves to our great city through so many different philanthropic efforts. The great American writer Oscar Wilde noted that "the smallest act of kindness is worth more than the grandest intention." As such, we thank these individuals and the many others representing so many worthy causes for their small and large acts of kindness, and we pray for their continued success. We pray for all of this and ask for there to be love, peace, and harmony in our city and throughout the world, this evening and always. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And what's next, please?
The agenda for the August 9th, 2016, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, August 5th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Madam Mayor, next is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, August 16th, 2016.
Ms. Spears?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority for August 16th, we have one business agenda item, that's Director of Community Development. This is regarding the annual submission of the Section 8 Management Assessment Program, self-certification for fiscal year 2015-2016. That afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. We have two items on the agenda. Director of Human Resources, this is regarding the LifeScan fingerprinting contract. And lastly, the Director of Human Resources Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the Glendale Management Association fire sworn managers. That afternoon, to commence at 3:30 P.M., the Glendale City Council meeting, we have our Work Boot Tuesday, City Council Policy Development Session. And this will be held at our Glendale Police Department, which is located at 131 North Isabel Street. And the City Council meeting is, of course, open to the public, and the areas of discussion will include crisis negotiation team, the de-escalation and peaceful resolution to a number of issues that our officers face on a daily basis, tactical medical training, weaponless defense tactics, mental health evaluation team that we have in place, and of course, question and answer portion of the meeting. Again, this will commence at 3:30 P.M., and it is part of our Work Boot Tuesday. And that concludes my report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'd like to extend my apologies to all of you that waited for an hour, but we've been on the go and meeting since 3 o'clock this afternoon with actually no break, so thank you for waiting, appreciate your patience. Next item, please.
It is Rotary Jewel City Fund and Fitness Day, check presentation to sponsors.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank Mayor Devine and the council members for allowing us to share some good things going on in Glendale. And especially, I'd like to thank you for your invocation, it was very, very well thought, and thank you for first introducing Rotary. May I introduce Elizabeth Metisarian? I think all of you know her, so, and also in case I missed something, she'll just tell me what I forgot. But anyway, my name is Frank Seito, I'm the president of the Rotary Club of Glendale this year. And we've, we worked hard last year to put on an event. On May 15th, we put on the Jewel City Fund and Fitness Day at Glendale Central Park. And I want to thank Mayor Devine and Councilman Garpadian for being there and saying some kind words and get the program started. The event included 35-mile ride, a family ride, a scavenger hunt, and an urban hike. Also, some other activities included were a rock climbing wall, and exercises for the family, as well as food provided by two local establishments. It was a very successful day, and we were able to raise over $20,000 and to benefit four organizations, of which three are here today, to explain what they use the funds, will be using the funds for, and a little bit about their program. I'd like to introduce Susan Hunt with the Glendale Educational Foundation.
Hi. I know about you guys. We are happy to have received a nice check from the Rotary Club, and we're using it to fund our programs. We just ended our fiscal year, so we went into last year's money, and we will be distributing that to the schools for robotics kits. For all the schools, all the schools are going to get robotics kits, which gives an opportunity for kids to work together collaboratively, to build something, and then be able to take it apart, so the next group can work on it too. The older kids work with the younger ones, so we've got mentors from the middle schools going down to the elementary schools, working with the robotics teams. And this helps them all expand their knowledge of STEM, you know, science, technology, engineering, and math. So we're pleased and we thank Rotary very much for the opportunity.
We have Cicely Guardia. She is the Executive Director of the Foothill Division, and she also is a member of our club and very active as being a new member. With the Boy Scouts.
Like you said, my name is Cicely Guardia, I'm a district executive with the Verdugo Hills Boy Scouts. We serve this area in scouting, and with the help of Rotary and the support that they given us, we're running out a whole new recruiting program and working in tandem with the Glendale Unified School District and Burbank Unified School Districts, so that we can get more youth into the scouting program, because we provide a fun and educational program that we want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to participate in. And we want to say a big thank you to the Rotary for giving us that support to make sure we get more youth into our program.
And finally, SRO Michelle Gonzalez with the, and where is he? Lieutenant Oscar Rodriguez, who is also a member of our club and very, very instrumental in making the day a success with representing the Explorers, Glendale Explorers, Police Explorers.
Hello. My name is Howard Bandikian, I'm part of the Glendale Police Explorer Program. And the Glendale Police Explorer Program would like to thank the Rotary Club for their generous donation to our program. The funds are used for various items that we need to be a part of the program, which are, some examples of that could be going to competitions, which we have one coming up right now. In competitions, we practice police tactics, we learn, and we grow together as a team, so that's very important for us. We also use the funds for various equipment and gear that we need to go to these competitions and do the daily tasks that we need to do for the community, and we also take part in many team-building exercises. So I would like to thank the Rotary Club for their donation. I would also like to thank the club for the hard work that they do in our community and just the wonderful job that they do overall in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the day was a success with the cooperation of the city and with the police department that escorted the bike riders, and it made a very enjoyable, safe day, and we look forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Is there, do you wish to show the video?
Yes, there is a video. Oh, there is a video?
There's a one-minute, two-minute video that I hope you enjoy, that summarizes what went on during the day. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do I get to wear the patch, too?
Comments from my colleagues, any?
Elizabeth was looking good out there.
You guys were great.
It was a great event. Well done.
She was doing all the activities and I was working.
We had fun.
It's always good to see fellow Rotarians in these chambers, and you guys did a great job, had a lot of fun, it was a great event, very successful. I didn't know you raised over $20,000, congratulations, and all worthy causes. Very good job, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I know Elizabeth, this was your brainchild. How many years ago was that?
Actually, four years ago. It was Dr. Berg, I have to give Dr. Berg and Natalie Camora the shout-out, too.
Well, it's grown, and it was so much fun, and you had great representation, and couldn't have picked better groups to receive the fruits of your labor, so I congratulate all of you. Great, good job, wonderful. See you next week. And next?
Next item is the consent calendar, and there is no items on the consent calendar for this agenda. So following that, it would be City Council and staff comments.
Any comments from City Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Just wanted a short comment about National Night Out. Last Tuesday, we skipped our regular meeting for the National Night Out, and what a great night out it was, because all of our, many of our neighborhoods had organized very nice parties. Fortunately, Glendale is a big city, so there are about 30 events taking place, we couldn't make it to all of them. Tried going to five, ended up going to four, and was too late to the fifth one, and all of them were excellent. So it's nice to see the community come out and just hang out with their neighbors and enjoy conversation, some good food, and have a good time. So looking forward to the next one.
Thank you. Councilmember Garpadian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. National Night Out was a very fun night, I echo my colleagues' comments. I have a couple of questions. We, in the last few weeks, we asked for City Manager and the staff to bring back reports or get some of the things that we wanted on the agenda, agendaized items, or like, I don't know, the shade structures in Maple Park, or the items that were supposed to go to Planning Commission. And what I'm hearing out there is that we are really jammed up, we're locked out right now. And I wanted to just bring this up and say, I personally, I'm willing to hold off for a month not to add more items to the plate, so we can catch up. Instead of trying to do 50 things at the same time, at least get five or seven or 10 of them done and move forward. I think that would be very productive. So I just want to put that out there. And secondly, the rent stabilization ordinance discussion, when is it coming back?
The evening of the 23rd of August.
23rd of August, okay. Thank you very much, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
No comments?
No comments. Councilmember Friedman?
No comments tonight, please.
I just wanted to mention, take the opportunity to mention, that I also enjoyed Neighborhood Night Out. It was great, it was a lot of fun, great food, and it's amazing to see how the neighborhoods come together and work to have a fun event, and that's always a pleasure, pleasure to see. And I know that's one reason why most people that live here in Glendale love Glendale, is because of the neighborhoods and how they can pull together. The second item I wanted to talk about was just very briefly, is on Friday morning, we elevated Bone South Korea to a sister-city hood. We're very proud of that. We had the ceremony here in the chambers. And then last night, Councilmember Najarian, Friedman, and I attended the 11th Annual Korean Pride Award Ceremony, and the mayor of Bone was awarded, was one of the honorees. And it was really quite an honor to see him receive this award, and also to realize the importance of the Peace Statue, the Comfort Women's Statue, that former council has, had enabled to be placed in our city, and how grateful the Korean community is for that. And so it was a great event, and I was proud, very proud, to be from Glendale last night. Thank you. And I have one speaker card. Staff, any comments? Okay. Phyllis Kim, speaking of the Korean community.
Speaking of. Hi, my name is Phyllis Kim. I am with the Korean-American Forum of California, but I also am a resident of proud Glendale. And I'm here to congratulate the legal victory that came down last week from the Ninth Circuit Court for the lawsuit against the city of Glendale for removal of the Peace Monument that is placed in the Central Park in 2013. The whole community was very excited, and we have, you know, been congratulated, but actually that congratulation and the gratitude actually need to be directed to the great, the City Council of Glendale and the wonderful legal team headed by Mr. Garcia. So we decided to have a party to celebrate. So we wanted to invite everyone, and we also wanted to, you know, make sure the members of the City Council are all there, including all the, you know, city staff and anybody actually, you know, from Glendale would be welcome. The event is open to public, it's free, great Korean food will be served, we will have music, we have a hip-hop artist who have made songs about comfort women. This is not about Korean issue, you know, this involves many different communities, including Chinese, Vietnamese, Thai, Philippines. So we are going to have people from those affected communities as well. The date is next Saturday, the 20th, at our Adult Recreation Center at the big dining hall at 3 o'clock. So it'll be from 3 to 5, so I hope everyone can make it. So that's it. Thank you so much for the great work. I was at the appellate court today to observe the oral argument in the Ginger versus the Glendale case. It went really well. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to be able to comment on any of the legal issues, but the attorney for the Glendale side did an excellent argument, and everyone was very happy. Thank you so much.
Is that at 3 o'clock?
Yes, 3 o'clock. It's 3 to 5.
Mr. Garcia, who is that?
Please bring your family members, too.
Thank you, thank you, Phyllis. Thank you. Was that one of our attorneys that she's referring to?
It's one of the city's attorneys, but not one of our in-house attorneys, it's outside council.
But Mr. Garcia oversees the case.
Exactly.
And we oversee the city attorney, so.
So good job.
Kind of like us being the argument.
Yeah, right, right, we were there. Okay, thank you. Next item, my last card.
There were no cards submitted for the three-minute general public comment section. The next item, and only item on this agenda, at 8:00 A. is Director of Public Works and Interim Director of Community Services and Parks regarding design-build of the Wilson Mini Park restroom project. 8:00 A. is a motion awarding a design-build contract for the Wilson Mini Park restroom project, specification number 3611, to ARC Construction Inc., in amount of $195,000, plus a 15% contract contingency of $29,250, for a toll not to exceed amount of $224,250, and authorizing City Manager to execute the contract.
I'm told there will be a long PowerPoint?
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, rather briefly, and as a way of background, on April 26, 2016 of this year, City Council authorized staff to issue an RFP for a restroom facility at Wilson Mini Park, the same night you approved the budget for this project. On May 4th, we issued a notice inviting proposals from several contractors, and on May 18th, we held a mandatory pre-proposal job walk at the site that eight construction firms attended. On June 8th, the deadline of the proposals, we received two from two construction firms, and the lowest price proposal was submitted by ARC Construction of Glendale, local company, in the amount of $211,950. We further negotiated that price down to $195,000, which is below the engineer's estimate of $200,000. On July 14th, our Community Services and Parks Department mailed over 1,100 notification letters to residents within the vicinity of the project site, and although we have not received any calls or any written responses to those letters, there was only one patron who approached a staff member at the park and was wondering about the hours of operation, so they were told that it will coincide with the park's hours. We'll open it at 7 o'clock in the morning and close at 10 P.M., and our own staff will perform the cleaning. Once you approve or the contract this evening, we will finalize the contract with the contractor within the next two, three weeks, review their insurance certificates, bond, performance bonds, et cetera, certify the contract. They will start then the design work in early September and obtain their building permits, as well as the sewer and water connection permits. And then we anticipate construction starting in October, and it'll be completed by the end of this year, by December of 2016.
Very good.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Bulanik and I will be happy to answer.
Thank you, thank you.
You're on tape right now.
I'm always on tape.
You're being recorded.
Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpadian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item?
Next item is Oral Communications. This is a five-minute portion discussion, is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and City Manager or Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. I have two cards. First, Tamara Lozessia.
I tell, thank you, Tom Lawrence. Next category, Arbejad, where of head of, we had your arach, you could, in it horror top, okay, it's it's gone, her tackle, frode, bashen, you could, so that, that's what, see to you, watch behind, not so much, have a sad, it does a host, it's make us, we're carac, we could, oh, if you're right, you're the, but that's a lot, get, but, but, I can't, but, but, it, it's very, she is, or, or, you're good, it, you're, you're, it's , you're, you're, it's, you're, you're, it's, oh, I'm, so, it, but, but, it, it, it's, 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 it's,[1798.14] Assembly District. Yet, these two individuals were against term limits for the seat of Glendale when it came up about a year ago. Mayor Devine, you were for term limits. Councilman Sinanian, you were for term limits. Councilman Carpedian, you ran on term limits. You have three votes on council. I hope it's time to bring it forward and put it as an agenda item. It's time. People want to speak, give them a choice. On another matter, let's talk about CalPERS and pensions. I know you don't like to talk about it, but you know, if you've been reading the newspapers for the past several days in both the LA Times and the Daily News, CalPERS continues to be a corrupt and irresponsible pension system. LA Times, CalPERS Returns Worst Since 2009. Public Pension Fund's Second Year of Low Return Raises Prospect of Help by Taxpayers. That means the people in the viewing audience are going to be seeing their fees and taxes increased again this year to pay for this failed system called CalPERS. We need to leave CalPERS. We need to put city employees on Social Security and 401K plan, just like the people in viewing audience who are on Social Security, too. What makes government employees have defined benefits? We don't. Why must the folks who pay the bills guarantee the investments of 7.5% return on CalPERS investments, but they don't make? And if they, when they don't make those investments, we, the taxpayers, have to pick up the difference. So because of that, our parks are getting dirty because we don't have the money to fix the parks, we're putting new parks. Roads are crumbling. Senior programs are getting cut. Public transportation is being cut. Why? To continue to fund this corrupt and irresponsible pension system. Former top cop Randy Adams, remember him here from the city of Belle? His pension is $288,000 a year, every year, and he's a young man. Average Social Security recipient is around $15,000 a year, not $288,000. It's this corrupt public official, Randy Adams, and he worked for the seat of Glendale, City of Belle also. Is the sky falling in state pensions? Another article. CalPERS is only 73% funded. So where are they going to get that money to fund it? They're going to get it from the taxpayers. Who else? You don't have enough, what they call, funds, enterprise funds, to raise money outside. We don't have a Disneyland to raise money. You know, property tax, sales tax only brings in so much revenue. The rest goes to the individual taxpayers. The system is broken. Please, you all talk about pension reform. Now is the time before we all face bankruptcy. It's going to happen. It happened in San Bernardino, it happened in the city of Santa Ana, it's happened in the city of Vallejo and San Jose. Too big to fail? I don't think so. Glendale's a good city, we want to keep it that way, but if we go into bankruptcy, my property value goes down. The character of my city goes down. The reputation of my city goes down. Now is the time, not after the rush is on. I've been here many times, I've talked to you all as a group and as individuals, to deaf ears. Now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next item, please.
Is there any new business?
None.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at 45. Thank you. Good night.